Public hearing to order, we've got a public hearing at seven, so we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just before we start with our board meeting, we've got a public hearing for the 2023 budget, the additional appropriation. There can also be public testimony regarding the additional appropriation IC 5-3-1-2, and this is for the debt service fund, a spend of $3,592.43. So I'd like to open the public hearing. I will start with a motion, I'd like to get a motion for the resolution for the additional appropriation, resolution debt service fund for $3,592.43, and then we can explain. So move.
Second.
All right, I'd like to read this quickly here, and then at that point, if anybody has discussion, we can discuss. Whereas it's been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one, be it ordained, resolved by the Delphi Community School Corporation Board of Trustees and the Delphi Community School Corporation Carroll County, that for the expenses of the taxing union, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds names and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. So the fund name is the debt service, the amount requested, and then we also have, excuse me, it'll be out of the major budget classification, so the amount is out of debt service payments So with that statement, we're allowed to have any comment from the public at this time, and we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Does anybody have public comment that has not signed up? Does the board have any comment before we move forward with a vote? Okay, so at this time, all in favor of the additional appropriation resolution from the debt service fund for $3,592.43, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, and the public hearing is adjourned. And it is 7:05, so we will move forward, perfect timing there, with the regular scheduled board meeting at 7:05. So I'd like to call the regular scheduled board meeting, and we will no longer do the Pledge of Allegiance or moment of silence because we just previously did that. So I'd like to start, we do have one public comment, Mr. Tim Connor, I will ask you to come forward here later on towards the end.
All right, thank you.
And so to start, I would like to get a motion for the approval of the amended agenda provided for you tonight. So move. Any discussion on the approval of the amended agenda as provided? Okay, all in favor of the approval of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, I will ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes for the October 9th, 2023 regular meeting, the November 13th, 2023 regular meeting, the December 4th interview for District One Deer Creek Township Board seat, and the December 4th Executive Committee meeting.
Mr. President, I move to approve our October 9th, 2023 regular meeting, the November 13th regular meeting, our December 4th, 2023 interviews for District One Deer Creek Township Board position, and also that the executive meeting was carried out in accordance as it was marked.
Second. Is there any comment on any of those meetings?
I'll abstain on this one also since I wouldn't hear from all of it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor of the approval of the minutes for the October 9th regular meeting, the note November 13th regular meeting, the December 4th interview for District One Board seat, and the December 4th Executive Committee meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving forward, we have the superintendent's report, Mrs. Circle.
First thing is Guaranteed Energy Savings Report, which comes out quarterly, I include that in your packets online. It looks like finally after the repairs that we had completed, we are now entering into savings, which is good. It details very clearly based on each building, so if you have any questions on that, just let me know.
I have a question. I kind of got the impression it was just put together by cut and paste, because on page three it said, "Delphi Community School Corporation in Roseville, Illinois."
I saw that as well.
I guess that too.
Yeah, I thought they just copied and pasted stuff together, and maybe wanted, maybe that being anything else.
I noticed that as well.
I just wanted to note that I-
I thought maybe we changed locations.
Maybe they have their tax dollars.
You have to ask Tony about that satellite facility.
Now, some other real exciting news is Lacey Pickering received Isashir's Lilly stocks.
Oh, wow.
Anything you would like to say? Nope. We're very proud of her, and it's very exciting, so.
Wow.
Yeah, very exciting. The kitchen classic, just wanted to give you a heads up, Mr. Dale can add more if you would like, but the first rounds are going to be Monday, the girls play at six, is that right, against Taylor, and then the boys start at 7:30-ish against Taylor. So those are the first rounds. So if you're excited, if you want to come. Board on Monday night, you know, because we don't have a board meeting next Monday, and you feel like you have to be here three weeks in a row, I think it's a great place to be. We do have, just to let you know, Mr. Hawkes here, Stansberry's here, Mr. Dale's here, Mr. Long has a sick child, so he is not here, but did give me some information on some of the recommendations, and then Mr. Sims is at the band concert currently, but do you have any questions from the board reports? If it's for Mr. Sims or Mr. Long, I can ask them and have them email you. Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
With no questions on those reports, we will move forward to number four, routine matters. I planned to group several of these together here, I'd like to get a motion for the consent items for monthly payroll and claims, and the amount of $1,553,831.39, the approval of the monthly financial reports as submitted by the treasurer. We'll skip over B, the employment of certified staff, there is nothing there. Also, 4C, the employment of classified staff as presented, the employment of ECA staff, that is 4B. 4E, this is resignations, terminations, and retirements, so we have a couple there, and then also 4F, those are fundraisers, facility usage requests as presented. So I'd like to get a motion for number 4A through F as presented.
Mr. President, I move we approve routine matters, A, C, D, E, F as presented.
Second. Is there any discussion on those? Okay. All in favor of 4A, C, D, E, and F as presented for routine matters, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving forward to old business, number five here, I'd like to get a motion for further discussion on the gasoline fuel tank lease, the installation of $100 to $250 for lease due to volume of product used, and Mr. Ross Strebek is here also with any questions on that. I need a motion, please.
Did we have a motion last time? Did we just table?
It was tabled. You need a motion, take it off the table. Take it on the second motion, do it first.
Mr. President, I move that we take the previous motion that we table off the table and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Second.
You want a motion to approve it?
Ross, can you fill us?
I can get a motion first, I'm gonna-
Okay, we will get an additional motion to discuss the fuel tank now.
To approve the table.
To approve the table.
Yep.
So move. Second.
Okay, I followed up on some questions that this circle said you guys had. The reason we don't need a dike on that particular tank is the way it's built, it's a double wall tank, and they don't require it. I think that, I think we sent you some information to kind of explain that, and I forgot what the other question was.
Security.
Security, oh, yes, thank you. We've got cameras down there, we've had them there for years, they cover the entire backlot, we have a locked gate, we have a key that only the drivers can use, so I think we'll be in great shape for that. It's worked well up here for the diesel pumps, that would not be trouble.
I think the main thing was the diking issue and setting up the line.
I asked him about that too, because I thought that was really weird.
Right.
But with the new style of tanks and the way they're built, they're approved by the EPA.
Because there's a meter or something on the inside.
On the inside.
Second outside wall that will let you know if it's leaking.
Just like our diesel tank, that's buried, there's a static layer in between that has meters on it that will detect any leaks.
Does that have electricity?
We'll have to run that, yeah, we will have to run the electricity too. They just set the tank.
When are they talking about installation?
Whenever we pull the trigger.
Okay.
I think for their side, it's pretty standard, pretty easy to roll in here and set a tank.
Was that, Ross, excuse me, if I, if it was in the previous, but is it a horizontal or a vertical? Do you know?
The tank, horizontal.
Horizontal, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Just to clarify, this isn't a lease, are we paying for this tank monthly?
No, it's a leased tank that means they have ownership and they take care of it, but because of the volume of fuel we use, there's no charge for that lease.
So the only thing we're paying for is the fuel?
The 250 installation and then the fuel.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question.
Just like your LP tanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ross.
Thanks, Ross.
Any other questions or comments on this fuel tank? We'll get that all cleared up. Okay. All in favor of the gasoline fuel tank lease with the installation of $250, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving forward, number six here, new business. I'd like to get a motion to discuss new board member, replacement of Mr. Steve Meyer for District One Deer Creek Township.
Mr. President, I move to nominate Stephanie Mills for the District One Deer Creek Township position that's open to begin 1-1 of 2024 and to be sworn in by our January 15th, 2024 meeting. I believe we got that in this time, didn't we, Nick?
Hey, I'll have to double check when I believe so.
Okay.
I believe it could be sworn in down at the meeting.
Anytime.
I could do it, or I, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we do it before that meeting. And our meeting is going to be on the 15th, right, Miss Circle?
Do we have a second? Second. Is there any further comment or discussion? Okay. I believe Mr. Meyer has asked to abstain from this, so all in favor of the new board member, Stephanie Mills, starting on 1-1 of 2024 to fill Mr. Steve Meyer's District One Deer Creek Township seat, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. New business, 6B, classified staff pay raises. I'd like to get a motion to discuss this.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to increase the staff pay as provided to us in our information, that was to take effect red to active, right?
No, it'll still be in the January.
Okay, right, I'm sorry, too far behind. Okay.
Can I get a second?
1-2024.
Second. Okay. Do you have any extra input or do you have questions on that? We were given a graph that kind of showed everything was written out.
It kind of shows for the most part dollar raise for our hour, for the most part on that, right?
Yeah, it's pretty much, there's a couple, like two anomalies, but bus drivers are different because they're paid by mileage, so those are $7.
Not per hour.
No, 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 per day.
Per day.
Yeah, so, but everyone came out to be about the same amount of raise, so that's why I put the $7, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on that?
I need to abstain.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor of 6B, classified staff pay raises, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. 6C, Ice Miller, I'd like to get a motion to discuss a charge of $36,750 for the GEO Bond 2023, and this is for services rendered for the GEO Bond for 2023. So move. Second. Mrs. Circle, do you have any extra information on this?
No, unless anyone has questions.
Pretty standard, you know, amount for bond work for bond counsel.
Okay. All in favor of 6C, Ice Miller, $36,750 for services rendered for the 2023 GEO Bond, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6D, I'd like to get a motion for the resolution to open a bank account and appoint authorized signers specifically designated to hold the funds generated by the 2023 GEO Bond in an interest-bearing account. This account shall be opened with First Merchants Bank, and I get a motion to discuss. So move. Second. Any questions or comments, Mrs. Circle, do you have any?
No, other than we did not know ahead of time we were supposed to have that account so that we don't mix the interest, because even the interest on that bond will go towards construction projects, so we need a separate account.
And actually, we'll probably earn some interest at this point, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So do we know, like, is this account a dual signature to withdraw money, and if not, who are we appointing as the signers? I assume are-
The authorized signers are myself, Andrea, Michelle, or Gala, and yeah, we have to have two.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make that public so we knew that. Thank you.
And it says on number five, plus have two.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of 6D, the resolution to open a bank account for the GEO Bond funds with First Merchants Bank, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6E, we're looking for a motion for MOA between DCHS, which is the experience site, and Purdue University, the college which allows DCHS athletic trainer Paul Senka to mentor new athletic trainers from Purdue's program. So move. Second. Mr. Dale, do you have anything on this?
I don't really have anything crazy, if you have any questions, it's pretty standard. We've been really happy with him, he's been an awesome trainer, he does a really good job communicating with parents and stuff, and this was an opportunity that he was really hoping to take part in, and obviously this is good. It's good to be in connection with Purdue's program because as the new ones come out, it helps Francisco recruit them in, and it keeps us staffed, and then when we have big events, he can bring them in to help, you know, wrestling tournaments and all that kind of stuff, so, yeah, it's kind of a win-win for all of us as far as we're concerned, so.
Yeah, I reviewed the contract, I didn't have any issues with it, and it's, you get additional trainers out there to bigger events, so that's a great, great thing to have, so being close to the university's definitely been a win for you guys, yeah.
So does training take place here?
So these are, basically, this is kind of like their last step before their license, so they've already went through most of their coursework, and then this will be the step where they're, you know, it's their internship, their-
Their hands-on skill.
Yeah, the more clinical type stuff, so then they could send him here, he can work with him on certain things, they can take some of his lower-end, you know-
Like taping ankles.
Typical treatments, taping ankles, that kind of stuff, they can take all that off his plate, so he can do kids' stuff.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of 6E, the MOA between DCHS and Purdue University to mentor athletic trainers with Delphi, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, 6F, I'd like to get a motion for the consultant agreement with Rettwell Behavior for the provision of behavioral consulting services until May of 2024, which is paid for through the special education grant.
Mr. President, I move we accept item F as presented.
Okay, were there any questions or concerns with the agreement?
I have a question. We had hired a behavior specialist to force bed, and now we're hiring additional because they can't handle or they're not trained, or how does it? Please step forward and-
We can't hire somebody who is a registered behavior technician, which is a lower level of training than a board-certified behavior analyst. So this person, her team, the owner of the company would come in and consult with us twice a week, and then, or once a week for two hours, and her employee would come in for an afternoon every, every day. We have particularly one student, but a couple in our essential skills class that have some pretty extreme behavioral needs, and the level of training that is required for those intense needs is just not quite where our staff is as a whole, and even with our registered behavior technician, she's got a lot of good experience, but she's, they're not able to find the tools to help this one particular student manage their behavior, so.
Okay, so this won't help us elevate ourselves a level then, or will it be part of a training to help us?
It'll be, yes, it'll be training so that, you know, when we have future students that have some more extreme behavioral needs, that we'll have more training and be better equipped to handle that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. All in favor, 6F, consultant agreement with Rettwell Behavior for the provision of behavior consulting services until May of 2024, once again being paid for through the special education grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6G, I'd like to get a motion to discuss House Bill 1003 for the flex waiver resolution. So move. Second. Mrs. Circle.
This is that annual resolution we have to do for the state, for PD. We're very close with the minutes, but I just always do it so that we make sure we're covered adequately.
Any other questions? All in favor of 6G, House Bill 1003 for the flex waiver resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6H, last one here, I'd like to get a motion to discuss Proven Solutions Contract for $11,855.83 per month. So move. Second. Mrs. Circle, would you like to start out with that, and then if they've got any questions, I think Mr. Sims is not here, so.
No, but he tagged Mr. Dale, because Mr. Dale's actually been working with us on locker room issues, so.
So this is the same company we've been using for our trial period of six months, ending at the end of the month, correct?
Yes.
There was information given to us about, basically, they did a, went through, there were some things that weren't discussed perfectly in the beginning, there's been things added, ironed out, and to my knowledge, everybody's very happy about this, is that correct? Does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns with where we've been and where we're going?
Is this the same price we were paying?
Yes, they did not raise.
Have we done detailed cost analysis, is this a kind of a new thing, or?
Yeah, we did the budget, because of how many we have positions not filled, it ended up being one. So we still are, we're still having-
Well, but we've been doing it for six months now, there's surely been some costs that we've had that we didn't expect.
They only charged us this amount, so we haven't had anything additional that I'm aware of.
Sporting events, are we paying overtime, are we buying supplies?
Well, I think, I mean, you can add, that's the same as it's been.
Sporting events?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're working well with, they're finally getting their communication worked out between our DCSE employees and their, then their employees coming in, so there are times that they'll come clean bleachers out, there are times that our people will do it, it kind of depends on, it depends on the time of the night the event gets done slash how big of an event it was, so obviously, an employee's game, we've got the entire gym completely open, and it's a really intense job, so all of our staff come in to help get that done, whereas, you know, a volleyball game, we only have half the bleachers out, so they would come either clean it that night, and then our guys would clear it away in the morning, or, you know, if it's not that bad, some of our kids would clean it, and then we'd clear it away, but they've kind of worked out the event side pretty well between the two of them.
So they're not charging us overtime, they're just cleaning within the-
Yeah, they just, basically, they have a, it's a contract job, they've got X amount of area to clean, and when it's cleaned, they go home.
Is this 12 months, or?
January to December.
Yeah, so what Zach was alluding to, the locker rooms were not to my liking, they were pretty dirty and gross, and so we, I met with the crew at night, said, I know this is in the contract, let's figure out what is ours and what is yours, let's get this ironed out. We did, went in, and the next morning, we were-
Not gross.
No. I wouldn't say spotless, but it was, it looked spotless compared to what we were dealing with, it was much better, and they've been, and obviously, now that they're on it, it's a lot better shape than what we were.
But wasn't part of the problem was we had clothing all over the place, and they didn't feel comfortable moving. What wasn't part of the problem was we had clothing all over the place and they didn't feel comfortable moving.
Yes, and then we worked that out with them, said, here's our system, we're going to put it in this, anything that's in the way that you don't want to mess with, just move it to this spot. Get, make sure everything's cleaned well. And we haven't really had any issues since. Let the kids know that if you're going to leave stuff out, it's going to be, it's going to find its way to the trash really quick because clearly you don't care about it to take care of it. And that seems to have did a lot of wonders.
Do we know how many employees this is equivalent to working?
Well, it was a night crew before, so that was four. And they've got four people on staff that are working with the supervisor.
Yeah, I've never seen them less than three. And they've even came and reported several, you know, maintenance issues and things along the way. I say, hey, this stall is totally, it's not flushing on the automatic flusher, and we can go get it fixed. So nobody reports a cleanup now, so.
Do we still have night employees?
Not, I mean, not for our, I think we have it for middle school.
They've replaced this, a Delphi employee in the building at night.
With ours, vice supervisor.
Far as custodian or anything.
Yeah, there's some custodians.
No, they closed, then Joe's kind of been the middle man that when they need, they need to know, really, a lot of times for events, they'll stand there and kind of, they'll be done with all of their areas and they're just waiting on the event to end, so they'll be standing there waiting on the event to end and they'll come in and clean. Or Joe will go let them know. Talked about, okay, you're doing this and we're going to take care of that part beforehand.
During breaks, they've already proposed deep cleaning or even other areas. So Gary told me summer, if we need to do like last summer where they went to other buildings, he said, that's fine, just let them know.
Mr. Rivers, and I'm quick looking over it again here. Where is the in and out clause on here? Do we have one? That if somebody, one or the other is disassembled? Like not doing their job if we feel, do we have an out for that, or?
Exhibit B.
I, I didn't see anything, it may be in there.
You're on exhibit B, correct? Probably. Yeah. That's my mistake. Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah. I didn't necessarily just see a clear cut, I guess, that if the job is not being performed one way or the other, if.
I don't know.
So you have to get, it will automatically roll over if you don't give 30 days notice by the end of, so it'd be basically November 30th of 2024.
So there's 30 days.
Right.
But that's for the end of the contract, if.
Right.
If we came in this-
I don't think, I think if they're like literally not performing the contract, you can terminate it, right? I don't think you need anything in the contract.
That's, that's, that's why, I guess, why I'm asking.
And exhibit A is spelling out-